Get this meeting started. Dear Lord, just thank you for the many blessings you've given the town of Stallings and each one of us. We just give you all the praise and glory. And as we celebrate Thanksgiving this week, just be with our families as they travel. Protect them and as always, protect our men and women in uniform and just bring them home safe. Everything we do and say, I give you all the praise and glory. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. So no public comments? Alrighty. Consent agenda. I talked to Alex. We need to take off C and make it a regular line item. So let's make that 3A. And then did anybody else have any questions on the consent agenda?
Sir?
Everybody, anybody talk to Alex? Alright. Are we good with that change? Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing item C.
Motion by Stephen, second by Brad. All in favor? As have it. Alrighty. Let's see, report from the mayor. I talked to Alex on this. And I thought it was interesting. Fox News did a piece on it and ran it as a regular article about a town of Carmel, California, which is obviously probably pretty liberal, I would imagine, if I had to guess. But the town has had so many complaints about the noise from residents about pickleball. The town has banned pickleball in any public park.
Wow.
So, but I don't know if it was at night or anything. So I asked Alex. I couldn't remember if our courts were lit, and so they're not. So that's the good news. And so I would recommend that we never light them up because people are working during the day most of the time. But if they come home, they don't want to hear, you know, the whacking of pickleball. We got one complaint from Shanamar that they're dealing with now. The courts in Shanamar are lit, and of course, when they come home from work, all they hear is the thumping going on. So I just thought that was interesting. So alrighty. Graham, you got anything for us?
No mayor other than, funny enough, the great actor Clint Eastwood was the mayor of Carmel back in the day.
Yeah.
Funny. Did he play pickleball? I don't know. He's still directing, so I mean.
Amazing he's active. I mean.
Well, he's ninety. I don't know if he's playing. Stephen, you got anything for us?
Hey, no. Both neither David nor myself made it to the Wuma meeting. And just for, we had several members, the Wuma actually roll off as part of the election cycle. So starting with January, it's probably going to be a slightly new team. And hopefully we'll be able to keep that rolling and have the right level of participation there. And I did want to take and say, appreciate the police department for inviting us out to their training ground and really showing us what they do to make sure that they are in shape to protect our citizens. And so it was a really good learning event, so appreciate it.
I just want, are you and David going to do the tasing?
No.
We, 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 we let him know that no. And the chief said that he too was not going to be doing that, and so there you go.
Alright. David, you got anything for us?
Represented Stallings at the Centralina Executive Committee meeting two weeks ago. Went to the Chamber Commerce Legislative Luncheon with Alex two weeks ago, I think it was also. Boy, that was a busy week. Union County Council on Aging represented Stallings at their breakfast fundraiser. And again, to reiterate what Stephen said, thanks, chief, for the invite. It's good to see what, I mean, obviously shooting at papers for us is not what the, not at all stressful like what the police go through and the training they went through. It's good to see what all is involved. And thank you for the chance to see it and participate.
Alrighty. Brad?
Obviously, Stephen and I are nowhere near as good as your staff.
Nothing from me, mayor. Nothing.
Alright. Alex, what you got for us tonight?
Thank you, mayor. Several things. First, I want to submit the budget line item transfer list, as we do every month. The Parks and Recreation Event Schedule, we're going to move that and bring that report in December. I also wanted to recognize Chief Franks and ask him to give an update on a recent nuisance action, please.
Mayor and council, in September, we launched a nuisance abatement investigation on the address 708 Pine Cliff in cooperation with North Carolina Alcohol Law Enforcement. It was, it moved very swiftly, and by November, I think in November 7th, we had a signed consent judgment where the house was required to be put up for sale. And from my understanding, there's already been an offer put in on the house. The realtor called me this morning. So this is, address is well-known in our history, and we've been, had multiple investigations over the years. But with the help of our detectives and ALE, we're able to hopefully put into that and increase the quality of life for those that live in that neighborhood. Any questions on that?
That was super quick, so that was just a super great job.
It moved very fast. I agree with you on that.
Alright. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Alex, on the, on the line item transfers, anyone you need to explain or go over with us or anything?
Sir, happy to answer any questions if you have any, though.
Alright, if anybody has some, just email Alex. Alrighty. Let's see. Kevin, you're on the list tonight? You got anything for us, other than, other than what's on the agenda? Alright. Alrighty. So the 2026 Park and Rec Event Schedule, we moved that to December 8th?
Yes, sir, with your permission.
Oh, yeah. Alrighty. And then, so we got the 3A added to the agenda, and then 5, we want to move that as well?
Yes, sir. We'd ask the board consider moving that to next meeting due to staff illness. And we'd also request to add a, add an additional agenda item related to IT infrastructure improvements. An issue came up that seems to be pressing. Yes, sir. It's the memo before you.
Alright, let's, let's make that 4A.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda and, in so doing, add 3A Employee Holiday Bonus and 4A Infrastructure, IT Infrastructure Improvements.
Thank you, Brad. Motion by Brad, second by David. All in favor? As have it.
Removal of the fifth, right?
Yeah, and removal of number five.
Okay.
Alrighty, 3A Employee Holiday Bonus. Real quick, y'all saw my email. I just thought it'd be easier to, let's round it up to 200 for full-time, 100 for part-time. So I think Jesse ran some numbers for Alex, and so.
Yes, sir. Ms. Jesse ran them for us, and I've got them right here for you. So the additional cost would be $3,027.05, so I think is a rough number. Think about budgeting purpose, purposes of being additional $3,100.
Okay. Well, that's my recommendation. Comments? Motion?
Mayor, I move approval of the holiday bonus. Increase.
Alright.
Couldn't think of the word.
There you go. Alright, motion by Brad, second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. Thank you all. Alright, 4A Annexation 59. Ms. Erin?
Yes, sir. The town received an annexation petition for an area near, on Chestnut Lane. I will investigate it and get back to you with more information. At this time, they've also submitted information to the ALSS as well to do zoning. So this is just the first step, a formality that the state requires officially asking you as the council to invest, or me, ask the court to investigate this petition and bring you back more information.
What's on the property now? Is it, Brad, this is your territory?
It's a four-acre parcel. It's got a single-family home that's been rented, and it's right at the, if you're familiar with the area, right across from the apartment complex at the south, what would be the southeast corner of the roundabout.
So just one single-family home, a four-acre? Any questions for Erin? Alright, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution Annexation 59.
Motion by Stephen.
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. Alright, 4A is the IT Infrastructure Improvements associated with the ABO. So Kevin?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, apologies for the short notice on this. We didn't get this quote until Friday afternoon, and I didn't get to talk about it with Alex, Jesse, and chief till late this afternoon as well. Didn't realize the urgency needed on this one. But ultimately, we're requesting council approval tonight for upgrades to our IT infrastructure. And it's also a rewiring, reorganization-type project. Currently, as it stands, we just do not have capacity to add data and phone lines to some additional workspaces. I know finance is anticipating, anticipating hiring a new employee here in the near future. We're not able, we have an office ready for that individual, but we're not able to get hooked up to printers, phone lines, or data run to that. So that individual would have to be set up in the front office area where the general public comes in and meets with staff. I know chief just did a small remodeling down in the police department that opened up four new workstations where we'll have the same issue. We just don't have the capacity to run, run new data and phone lines down there, given our existing infrastructure. On top of the capacity needs, we also have some operational issues that we're running into that we just, just due to the unorganization, we just can't troubleshoot it. We have our, for example, our elevator, the phone line keeps cutting in and out, and we just can't. We've been working with Windstream for almost a month at this point because we just, we just can't troubleshoot it from, from our server room. We can't trace the wires back to what actually leads into, into the elevator. Also, we're having an issue where one of our lines is, it's a 911 service call line that just keeps calling out and hanging up. Obviously, not good if we're giving false alarms in that sense as well. And then, or just troubleshooting in general, if we have issues with anything IT-related, it, it's almost impossible to troubleshoot it because you can't trace anything back. And just to put it in perspective, I did take a couple pictures of our server room. Kind of show, lot going on, little organization, so we just need to retrace everything.
I don't remember doing any work here.
So obviously, a bunch of not only capacity, but operational and service-related issues we're running into. So the quote we got with Contego is $11,000. We're asking for, to include a 20% contingency, up to $13,200 for anything unforeseen that might pop up in this project. And with that, be happy to answer the questions, but ultimately, the request is to approve this project for $13,200 and approve the ABO associated with that.
And then, explain to me what a patch panel is.
A patch panel, I believe, and I'm no expert on this, so I don't want to misspeak, but I believe the patch panel is where a lot of these wires connect back in here.
Does it increase efficiency? Is that what the purpose of it is?
Yes, yes.
Because I was looking on the quote, I didn't see patch panels listed out, so I don't.
So ultimately, yeah, that's, we're getting a larger patch panel.
I'm sorry.
It's going to increase our, our capacity. Yep.
There it is, Kevin. I'm sorry.
Yep, yes, sir.
Any questions for Kevin?
Is Wi-Fi being utilized in any of these new workstations?
V likes us to connect to our Compinet, our IT contractor, likes us to directly connect to, you need to directly connect to the printers. We do have Wi-Fi available. I'm not sure if Wi-Fi is going to be utilized for the new spaces.
Due to restrictions of accessing state pay-to-pay, we're restricted on the ability to use Wi-Fi, so we have a lot of our connections have to be hardware.
Okay.
Our cell phones and things like that use Wi-Fi, but typically, our computers are directly connected with Ethernet and docking stations.
Alright, and then what's the proposal on how to pay for this? Do we have some excess fines or what?
May I ask Jesse to speak to this?
Alright.
So at this point, we're, we've got an ABO for you where we are just proposing to appropriate fund balance. Now, obviously, we don't know how much fund balance we ultimately have since the audit isn't complete yet. And it may be that we actually don't end up having to use it come the end of the year, but we won't know that yet. But that's what we're proposing at this point to make sure we do have the funds for it, is to appropriate fund balance.
Alright. Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions for Jesse, or Alex, or Kevin? Alright, what's the pleasure of the council?
I have one. I'm assuming not the same people that did this is going to do the next one.
No, Contego will be working with Compinet as well to work in conjunction, make sure everything's labeled appropriately. I think the way this got, got to this bad is just individual, individual contractors have just been coming in and doing what's quick and easy, just to get the requests done, and it spiraled. And here we are to this point where it just needs to be completely reorganized, so. But Contego does a lot of work for us as well.
Alright. Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I would move to approve the IT infrastructure with the budget of $13,200.
Alright, that sounds good. Thank you, Graham. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Stephen. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. That's unanimous. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you all.
Alrighty, splash pad, we're switching off. Some new council member transition plan. So Alex is teeing that up.
Alright, so it's often said that sometimes you learn best by making mistakes. And I think this transition plan was born out of mistakes. Typically, when we have a new employee coming in, we make sure that they're trained, that they have adequate support, resources, that kind of thing. But several years ago, I observed that when we had new council members coming in, we weren't providing them with the information, the tools, the support they needed in order to succeed.
No, I just wondered if that's smart.
And after talking to some new members, learned, alright, got some feedback and said, alright, there might be some things that we can do in order to support them. Make sure we have a smooth transition in and have the board functioning as a cohesive unit. Certainly doesn't mean where the board is agreeing all the time. If you're agreeing all the time, something's wrong. But really, how do we operate effectively and also meet ethical requirements as well? So what this plan does, it tries to support the education, integration, and again, ethics training of all our new board members and newly re-elected board members. So what does that look like? There's several parts of it, and I'm going to need your direction on how you want to handle several parts. So the first thing we're going to look at doing is to provide a, what we call lovingly, a new council member boot camp. So it's great that Mr. McCauley's here. Can't think of anyone better with his years of service to local government in North Carolina to talk about the council manager form of government. If you're new to that form of government, operating in it can be challenging. And so what are the do's and don'ts? Have a Q and A discussion roundtable, and then go into Ms. Nichols, who I can't think of anyone better, to talk about the next topic with town council procedures, agenda process, voting, Roberts Rules of Orders. Go through that and really do kind of a mock demonstration to see how that works. Now, we're going to be ahead of the game because our newly elected folks were already on planning board. So we're going to be really doing a great job and ahead of the game. Then next would be the lunch with Mayor Lex Scholl, who will then be the mayor. He can help answer any questions, set expectations, and just have a good conversation. Then in the afternoon, we'd go over the council priorities. Look at the town as an organization. Who are we and what do we do, right? If there's a pothole, how do you handle that? If there's an issue with police, what do you do? And just talk about all the varying things and services that the town provide. So this first part of it, up until now, the new member orientation boot camp, that can be absorbed in the budget. This next part is about kind of building, getting ethics training, meeting those requirements for, again, not our elected officials, not for Stephen and Laurie, because you're still in the middle of your term, but for Graham, David, Brad, as well as John and Mike, getting them their required ethics training. As well as taking this as an opportunity to kind of really learn and potentially go together to the UNC School of Government's Essentials of Municipal Government course. It covers a variety of issues. I've been to it personally, and it gets good reviews. There's a variety of dates and locations that might be available. They range in cost. I'm told Chapel Hill is the cheapest, but it's not inexpensive. So that's a decision point for the board as we come back. Do, does the board want us to go as a group? Are there any other options that you like to consider? I will mention that typically, later in the year, an online option typically becomes available. But as of right now, none have been posted. And then finally, the annual retreat. Similar to what we've done in the past, Mr. Kurt Walton has agreed to facilitate the 2026 Annual Retreat. And so that'll be in the same vein as similar retreats. Mr. Walton will conduct interviews one-on-one with each council member, hear what y'all think, what issues of concerns, and try to identify priorities and concerns ahead of time so that we can shape the retreat to meet the board members' objectives. And obviously, we'll have a retreat. There'll be the typical facilitation. And like any, most good retreats, the idea would be to come away with a good team connection and also a set of next steps and measurable objectives. One option point that we'll come back to is where do we want to hold the retreat? Do we want to do it in the government center lobby, or do we want to go to another off-site location? Again, the choice is yours. And then step four, you know, I couldn't resist an optional team-building activity. Now, certainly, if you go to the UNC School of Government trip, there's opportunities for team buildings through that, just being around each other, breaking bed, that kind of thing. So I wanted to throw that, that out there as an option. So to go back to the decision points. First, what I'm asking for tonight is approval on the council transition plan generally. Hear any feedback of, about attending the UNC School of Government Essentials and Municipal Government course. Hear feedback on the annual retreat location, as well as a team-building activity. So happy to answer any questions you may have, and I'm here to listen.
Alright, thank you, Alex. Open dialogue, whatever feedback y'all can give Alex. Getting to the right page. I'll go ahead and kick it off. John and Mike, when y'all go out and get your ethics training, tell them when you sign that paper once, you shouldn't have to sign it every year. My ethics don't change. When I signed it that first time, I swear to God, I put my hand on the Bible, and I shouldn't have to sign it every year. But, you know, they don't care what I say, but I feel good getting it on my chest.
We have to do the ethics every election, which is why five of us have to go this time. Same thing, but the Essentials of Municipal Government is, I find, a great refresher. Although I'm in my 10th year here, I still hope I've learned something new. But it's a good opportunity to network, as well as learn something new. And I hope we can all figure out which one we're going to do. It's not required that existing members attend the Essentials class, but it is required to do ethics.
I thought it was better the second time because I actually knew more questions to ask.
Yeah.
The first time, it was all brand-new stuff, so.
Anything in this plan that Alex has proposed that anybody that's not comfortable doing, or does everything look good?
Well, that part looks good. The, um, chuckled, Alex chuckled first. The team-building thing. I don't know, why'd you chuckle first?
Never mind. I'll put you on the spot.
Yeah.
That is optional. I think we could probably, if we do this class together, or at least the bulk of us, that'll be plenty of team-building. We'll have other opportunities for team-building locally. Annual Retreat location, we've had it here, and we've had it at the Shanamar Clubhouse over the years. And I can't remember if we've done it anywhere else, but I, to keep the cost down, I propose we stick in, stick close by. Either here or a clubhouse. Doesn't have to be Shanamar. And if they charge for it like they are for the party, no, we can find something $200 less expensive. That's my thought on that. Seems to me there's another clubhouse in the town that.
Callanwood.
Yeah.
Which is pretty big enough.
And I don't mind moving around. Doesn't have to be Shanamar. It just happens that we know Shanamar Clubhouse pretty well. It worked out great, but if, if any clubhouse is going to charge us, then that room out lobby here is perfectly adequate.
Alex, I'm fine with one. I'm, I'm fine with three being here local. One thing I'd, I'd want you to maybe explore in the orientation or retreat or sometime, we're organized by districts. Graham's on, and our town is so long, as obviously you know. Graham's in one, I'm in six, and we're probably 10 miles apart. I've got three or four issues in District Six that I want to work on in the next year, and I want to talk through the budget season with those. Examples would be Callanwood's lighting we've talked about, a crosswalk on Weddington, a few other things that I know about and no one else does. I'd love for each council member to bring to the retreat or another, just a snapshot of some of the hot items in their districts. That would be helpful to me, I think, particularly as we head into the budget season. I'm okay with the team-building activity. We have, you know, a couple of new guys I don't know very well. I'd love to actually do something. Some have said no before, only because of, I think we can accomplish the same thing in the retreat. But I wouldn't discourage you from coming up with some thoughts and bringing them to us for something that would be enjoyable and fun. Somebody might have a lake house we could borrow or something.
And this, this document's a fluid document that can be.
Sure.
Bound, bound to everything, so. Any other comments, questions?
I would just echo the sentiment on the retreat. I think every year I've done it, it's here, and it's worked out. I don't think it's held us up from having lively conversations. So unless there is a free clubhouse out there to keep classes low. a free clubhouse out there, to keep class low. This is places just as good as anywhere else.
All right, so what I'm hearing is just we're okay with Alex's document as submitted, so that a motion and give him direction to move forward.
Oh, yeah. I noticed that we've all, I don't want to speak up for the Essentials course because I'm one of the only people here that don't need to take it. So is everybody thinking?
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm sorry, I don't probably plan to go.
Okay.
It's a, is it a couple of days?
I think it was a couple of days.
It's hard for me, I've been Chapel Hill every month, and I just, I don't want to go again just for that. Again, if, but if that's part of, that's why I would encourage maybe a more local team-building effort. If that would be the team-building, then I might be talked into going, but it's a, it's hard to do that for me, I think.
But as far as approving this document, it's, those options are open to any council member, if they want to go to Ashford, Chapel Hill, just.
Well, now that you're getting into the details of where it's going to be at, that might be what sways me.
Depends on when you want to go, but.
All right, so what do you need here? Because it doesn't say there's any action.
It, it sounds like there may be some that would like to go, there may be some that may not like to go, and that's okay. What I might suggest is let us send up, for lack of a better term, a signup sheet, and we can hear who would like to go and who would li, not like to go. And that way, we can do a budget amendment as appropriate.
All right, so let's get a consensus on the transition plan. We might not need a motion.
It's good.
Yeah, I don't hear anybody. Got a thumbs up from everybody, so thanks for your work on this.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
All righty, the usage of the town logo, Mr. Ayers.
So I was out here on Election Day, and I did get a question filtered about just around the usage of our logo and seal, on whether that's protected. And my understanding, talking with, with Alex, is that pretty much anybody can use our seal or our town logo. And so the concern came, you know, was, is that something that we want to look into? And the idea here was just to get a consensus from the group on whether to let staff look at how we should potentially protect those elements of our town. Yeah, and on the other end of the spectrum, later on, I was actually asked a similar question around what constitutes a kind of a gathering at the park versus a, a, an event at our park. And right now, we don't have any details on what, what would be the difference between 10 people getting together at the park and meeting versus 300 people getting together at the park and meeting. And some would say one, one would be just a gathering of folks, one would probably be an unsanctioned event, and just asking staff to look into, how do we, how do we codify that potentially? So that's basically it. Anybody?
I like your second part. That is an interesting and possible problem that we not have sanctioned event. Social media say everybody say gathered our park to do whatever.
And we have had, back in the summer, at least two events that I know of that were, I don't know how big they were.
But it's hard to separate that from just a big old birthday party, too.
But.
Yeah, if they're not having to rent a facility, you know, how do you stop them?
Yeah, I mean.
So maybe.
That's the reason, that's the reason why, something to look at, something not to look at. Anybody's got any concerns with either one of these? Just some, like I said, somebody asked me about it, so I brought it here. And, and the idea tonight would be if we, if we felt like we needed to do something, just to direct the staff to look into both of these items.
Well, as far as the logo and the seal goes, when we made the change to, to go to this, the other one that had the red circle around it, I remember having a discussion about that one, and it seemed to me the trademarking for one was a couple grand, like four grand or something. Remember that one, or? About four grand, and we're like, at the time, it just didn't seem prudent.
Okay.
And so we didn't. And that was just the seal, then there's the logo, and you're right, he did use it, so did I. So.
Oh, this, again, this was a question that was asked to me.
And it would be gone, I mean, it was an election thing, so his was gone, mine's. But I represent Stallings, too, so it's like, well, it's on my Stallings page.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it up. I'm, I'm not inclined to spend money on anything, but it does bring up a question if a, if a, if a local business, I think this happens in Charlotte quite often, I think with the Crown, if a local business, I'll, I'll just, I'll just say it, let's just say a topless bar opens up and, and promotes in using our town logo, do we have recourse? That would be my question.
Yeah. Mr. McCarley?
Answer's no. If it's not trademarked, and you're not defending that trademark.
It's not likely to happen, but I think that's just the risk, and it's a very, very low risk. So I'm, I'm not inclined to change my opinion, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. All right, well.
I, I agree, it's just a low risk and not worth spending the money on, but.
Can you, could you then, after that, since, do we own, could a business owner trademark our town logo?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that's the, that's the flip side of it.
Spend money to change our town logo, I guess. Again, it's not likely, but just a thought.
All right.
Did Charlotte trademark the Crown?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
And defends it aggressively.
So could we, because I think the, the main concern would be is how this came up, right, in, in election, if there's any idea that there's an endorsement, could we require, I mean, granted, we wouldn't have much, there wouldn't potentially be much teeth to it, but require if you are running for any elected office and, or pursuing any office in Stallings, you cannot use the logo, or if you do, just include disclaimer, not endorsed by the town.
Well, I think, I think I will tell, the conversation went down the fact that on social media, any random person could create a group that would, could spoof the town itself and use our logos, seals, and things, and make it look very official. And so that's kind of where the conversation went. It didn't really, it didn't really focus on the usage during the election, just, just being transparent here.
So it's such a nominal amount of money. I'm not going to reverse what I said, I still think the risk is low, but I do think it's spending money, which could be a, a quick, ask the manager to bring us in the budget season, a, a quick, what does it cost to trademark and protect the town's logo?
Yeah.
My guess is it's going to be a small amount that we could talk about in the budget. I mean, it's not a budget line item, but.
The point of losing it is what's making me now sway that to possibly spending some money, because it'll cost money if that happens, so if it's a, I, I kind of think that we should ask staff to bring it something like Brad just said, something during budget season with a much firmer cost estimate
Okay.
For the both, the logo and the seal.
All right, so that's, I think that's three out of four, unless Graham agrees.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
And I think to your second point, right, or have we addressed that, the?
No, go ahead.
That raises, I, I thought it raised a good question of, do we have a limit for if you are trying to gather more than 100 people, you have to get a permit? Do we have a, I mean, is there something out there like that?
It's a good question. I know with our, our park shelters, which is the only parts of the park that we rent, the capacity for each of those shelters, and thus the rental capacity, is 50 people. But let me check with our, our parks department, and I'll follow up with you on the specific rules and procedures regarding larger-scale events outside, outside those shelters.
And my, and my concern is not even necessarily that people paying for a permit or anything. I, if you're gathering 250 people in a park, that size of our park, that then creates potential issues with, like, police and safety.
Of course.
So definitely, I, I think
Of course.
Probably something we would want to have.
We typically, you know, there are people that call us from time to time and say, hey, I want to have fill-in-the-blank type event, doesn't matter what it is, but they're, they're large events just like that, you know, 250, 150 people, and we just tell them, thanks, but, but no thanks. We don't have the capacity to be able to handle. We haven't had a situation, at least that I'm aware of, where you have an event that large that would just kind of come, and I'm thinking of a flash mob, there's probably a better way to describe it, but just kind of descend on the park. Typically, you get a little bit of a heads-up from the planners of that, but let me check with our, our parks staff and see what kind of policies and procedures we have.
And again, that was just kind of the, the idea, is to bring it up on, just do a little bit of research on what protects the town.
It's a good question.
Right now, my understanding is, is that if, if 350 people showed up, we really have no, there would, there's nothing that we have in the plan, that ordinance that would prevent that from happening, and would we still be responsible for safety-related issues or things of that nature if that were the case? I don't, I don't know.
Yes, sir. We'll check it out.
All right.
All righty. One thing I forgot to talk about when my report came up, and I don't know if I have to put it on the agenda or not, but email Alex just sent out about Melanie's talk about the occupancy tax and implementation, so you have to give 10 days' notice. So I'll leave it up to y'all when y'all want to advertise that, but we can start collecting revenue in January. I would, based on what I read, I might have been reading it wrong, but, so, y'all need to make a decision, what you want to do on that.
The ball already rolling?
We were starting some preliminary research. We were kind of, kind of move at the same pace as Indian Trail, because obviously, we said to the town attorney, there might be some cost savings.
Where, where are they at?
The exact same place where we are, just kind of researching it. So I know, you know, our finance staff, we're talking to finance staffs at other places looking at the, the templates, the things like that that we need to do, so.
All right. Well, y'all are on it, I'll leave it up to y'all, so.
But.
I did my job.
Go ahead, the done tax. We're going to call it, we'll name it after you.
I appreciate that.
Something's got to be named after you, I don't know.
There you go. All righty, well, thank y'all. Can I get the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Brad, seconded by Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
As have. All right, thank y'all.